We will start as soon as there are twenty people. Right now, there are sixteen, I think they will be joining. Okay, let us start off with our discussions. I am sure some of you are quite active in stock market trading, right? Anybody? Just to understand and in fact, no, we will have one or two examples from there as well. Professor, the name is Marty.
Does anyone have number of sir, you can call and check? Hello?
Damish sir, mehab.
Yeah, looks like.
Sir has come, sir has come back.
There was small problem in the wifi because my laptop is on wifi here in the office. Okay. I am sharing the PPT. Yeah. I think now it is okay. Today, we will have the scatter diagrams or scatter plots and correlation. And students know t distribution and chi distribution for about half an hour. Anyway, I will earmark the time at the end. Hope you are able to see the PPT.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. There is some problem, you know. Okay. Here, I will require about one and a half to one hour, maybe not two hours to discuss about the scatter diagrams and the correlation, okay? Okay. Just look at this diagrams. There are three diagrams put in one, you know, together up to there and you will find, you know, say horizontal axis and vertical axis. And naturally, whenever you have such axis, one of them represents no one variable. The other one represents the second variable. And what now we are assuming is that we have two variables, okay, two variables. Hope I am audible, right? Am I audible to all of you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, two variables.
Yes, sir.
These variables, you know, say what I am assuming are random variables, okay? And one on the horizontal axis, other on the vertical axis. In fact, now even you can see the, you know, graph here. Graphic, graph sheet, you must have seen as such, that's what has been done. This will also indicate as to how to draw these type of diagrams. That's the reason why, you know, graph, you know, a sheet has been say used over here. Now, as I said, scatter diagram represents graphically the relationship between two random variables, okay? Here, you say what we do is to plot the, you know, values of x and y given to us, okay? In this xy plane. That's what you say we do, okay? Now, x value for any, you know, point xi comma yi. You will have to see as to what are the xi value in the horizontal axis. On the way, on the vertical axis, you will have to see the value of y. And draw either vertical line or horizontal line depending on you have x axis or y axis. And the point at which those lines intersect will give the, you know, the dot at which they intersect. That dot is the point corresponding to xi yi. That's how we have to draw. Anyway, I can also give the way in which you cannot draw, that is very simple one as such, okay? Now, if you see the first, you know, say diagram now, what is, you know, say observed is that as x values are increased, okay? Y values also increase. You will find that xi yi, as you increase x and y values from one to further values. Similarly, y values from one to other higher values. What you find is that the points that you have got are moving forward, moving forward with some slope. Okay, with some slope. If you consider the second diagram, this is the first diagram, what you find is that those dots that you draw, drawing dots is very simple. For example, now I can explain. Yeah, oh, yes. For example, if you consider value x being five, then y being five, say. Xi yi are five comma five. You will find correspond X equal to five, go up, okay? You draw a line and corresponding to value y, value five of y, draw a horizontal line. They intersect at the point which is having a dot, okay? So, if it is five comma five, x comma y is equal to five comma five. We can easily put a dot on the, you know, point at which they intersect. That's what is being done here. You can do it for all the values, okay? That's how the dots are being, you know, say drawn or plotted, okay? Because you know, say these are plotted, no, this is called a scatter diagram. How that values of x, x comma y are scattered, that's what it indicates, okay? And as I said in the first diagram, they are all moving, you know, say forward with some slope. If you consider the second diagram, you will find these dots are moving downward. Because xi yi dot will bet a higher, you know, say altitude and they slowly move downward. And this quite particular phenomenon, you will see that, okay? Accordingly, we also have the relationship between variables x and y. And if you consider the third diagram, this is the other two diagrams. What you find is that these dots you have drawn are scattered everywhere. They don't show a trend, they don't show a pattern. They are done, they are spread of a sudden. Whereas in the first diagram, they are, you know, ascending, okay? Are most along a straight line. Whereas in the second one, you find the dots that you have got are descending, negative. Whereas in the third diagram, they are all scattered, okay? In different places, there is no pattern as such. Just observe this, say, I said it uses dots to indicate the pattern of the relationships between the variables x and y. Hope you say how to draw the graphs, these are dots you can easily make out once you have the graph sheet. Let us take one example. This example is simple one, not a difficult. Are you are able to see the next slide? I think no. This is the slide. Here you have got one example where the age of children, okay? Of course, in years, the age is given and height of the child in feet, there means, you know, say given, okay? This is one dataset that you have got. And we have gotten children starting with age three, you know, it goes up to, you know, children with the, yes, child with the age ten, ten years. Now their heights are also given. Now, the study is to see whether there is any relation between the age of the child and the height of the, you know, say child, okay? Age and, you know, say height are the two variables x and y, okay? Now, if you try to plot, plot this, you get a diagram of this type, okay? I think you are not able to see this, right? Okay. You are able to see the diagram?
Yes, sir.
Age versus, height versus age. Age is along the horizontal axis and height is along the vertical axis. You find the dots, say for example, the child with age three is having height of 2.5, nearly 2.5, I think 2.3, it is okay. This 2.3 over here, I think diagram is small, but you can see I view, right? So, a child of age three has a height of 2.3 feet. Then child of age four has almost 2.7, I believe. I will just check, yeah, 2.7, right? That way, these, you know, say dots represent the points in the xy plane where x is the age, y is the height. Okay? Now, can you see some of the pattern over here, what is, you know, say shown in this particular diagram? Where we have plotted the age and height of the, you know, children. You have a pattern, right? And with increasing values of age, you find the height is also increasing. And further, you will find that these dots, whatever you have are not, you know, say scattered altogether and you find almost a straight line can be drawn along them. Of course, some may be just above, some may be just below, am I right? So, you find here height is almost linearly changing or increasing with the age. That's what we understand here, it is not positive slope, slope I should say. Okay? Hope this is clear or any difficulty you have in understanding. As I said, the height versus age, dots that you have drawn, they follow a pattern. There, you know, you find as the age is increasing, your height is also increasing, okay? Is the height linearly dependent on or linearly, yeah, we can say dependent on the age? That of course we will have to see. But if you observe the dots, leaving out one, all the remaining corresponding to age four, remaining are almost on the, on a straight line. Maybe that, you know, there is small deviation from the straight line, that's what we find. This first one observation, okay? And such observation you will have to make. Now, consider one more example where you have got. Let me put in the slide more so you can easily see. Days of the week and the sales that has, you know, taken place in a, you know, place where, you know, say we are selling some products, okay? If you see that days of the week, anyway, one day we will, yeah, we can have all the days, there is no problem at all. First day, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday up to Saturday suppose now we have. And these dots now represent, tick dot represent the sales that has happened, okay? It could be in a restaurant where so many plates of, you know, some sweets is being sold or it could be a number of, you know, units that are being sold. You have this type of, you know, say scatter diagram. What is that you find over here? Is there any increasing relationship between the two variables days and sales? Or is it decreasing one or you can't say anything about that? Can you tell me?
Until some point it increases, then decreases, again increases, then again decreases.
Oh, yeah.
Some range, if you can consider.
Yeah, correct, you are right. Anybody else, let us understand from others also.
It's scattered, sir, it's scattered.
It is, acha, now we do this way, corresponding to day four now, you have got a point which is having some variation. Alright, say up to four it is increasing, whereas at exactly four it decreases and again it increases. Now, in case you drop that four, don't consider Wednesday, don't consider Wednesday. If you don't consider Wednesday, what is happening is that, say for Sunday it is at some value, Monday increases, Thursday again it increases, I am dropping now Wednesday and Thursday it slightly decreases and then say six again it decreases and that way you find first increasing trend, then decreasing trend. Only Wednesday is the, you know, odd man out like. Now, in case we drop this, you know, say Wednesday, that is, you know, day number four, you find a sort of nice curve if you join the points, okay? Now, whatever curve it is, it is a smooth curve, I should say, if you draw that and it resembles, if you know, you know, little bit of math. It is, you know, say sort of, you know, say parabola, parabola which is, you know, elongated, okay? This is very important, you know, say observation, I should say. Because the relationship between, relationship between the variables x and y can be almost linear as seen in the above figure or it could be curricular, okay? Or it could be completely scattered, okay? That's what is the reading that you have from this diagram. Because corresponding to x equal to four, you know, that days equal to four, you know, there is, you know, one dip in the sales. Okay, if you remove that, yes, you will have a curved shape that you get by joining these dots, okay? Some observation that now you are making here. Now, how to draw a scatter diagram? If you want a procedure, it is very simple of, I have already told you about this. One minute, this is jumping, okay? How to construct a scatter plot or scatter diagram? It's very simple, there are three simple steps to plot a scatter, a scatter diagram. Step one, identify the x axis and y axis with, yeah, for the scatter not diagram. Then define the scale for each of the accesses, access. You will have to properly define the scales, okay? For example, horizontal axis will be number of, you know, say rather child number and along the vertical axis it could be height. Or if it were sales being made on different days of the week, then horizontal axis will have the day number. Vertical axis will show the sales made, okay? That way, that's what I meant was say that you should have proper scale for each, you know, axis. Now, step three is plot the points based on their values. You know, the horizontal axis, say if it is x, x value you know, y value you know, you plot that. For example, in this case of now children, children, you know, 3 comma 2.3, 4 comma 2.7, that's what now we have shown. And then 5 comma 3.1, this are all the xy points that you are plotting in the scatter diagram. Okay, as we have seen here. Now, the having seen this, having seen as to how to construct a scatter plot or scatter diagram, now we will have to see as to what are the types of scatter diagrams or plots. As you know, I have said, a scatter plot helps in finding relationship between two variables. It may be almost linear or it may be a, you know, curve or it may be completely, you know, disparate, you know, dots spread all over the xy plane, okay? Those are the things that now you have. The relationship that you have got, the relationship that you have got between the variables x and y is now referred to as correlation, how they are correlated, how they are related. Though correlation is not just qualitative, there is a coefficient of, you know, say correlation which we will see so. Based on the correlation, scatter plots can be classified as first. Scatter plot for positive correlation. What is that we will see? Scatter diagram or plot for negative correlation. Scatter plot for null correlation or zero correlation. What are they, we will see them later. Now, see, look at this now diagram, this of course we have seen in the very first, as I said as well. A positive correlational or relationship is one in which an increase in one variable will lead to an increase in the other variable as well. If x increases, y also increases, okay? Also, a decrease in one leads to decrease in the other. Either both increase or both decrease, okay? Now, a decrease in one leads to a decrease in another. In the positive, this is called positive relationship between, between the variables x and y. And we also say that if x increases, x has the orientation of increasing. Similarly, if now y increases, we say y has the orientation of increasing. Now, both will have the same type of, you know, orientation. Both x and y are increasing or both are decreasing, okay? This is called positive relationship, you know, one goes with the other, not in the reverse sense. Whereas in the negative correlational relationship, what is happening is that if values of one variable decrease, that will lead to increase in the other, you know, say a variable and vice versa. Just look at the second diagram. Here, what you, what is given is that, say x value is, you know, say one here, y value is in height, six. Then next comes now at about 2.5 or so. You have got now value of x is small, whereas y is very large. As x increases, yes, y has gone to slightly higher value. Thereafter, what you find is that when you go, when the x value moves to three, yeah, y value drops. Then when X is equal to four, Y value goes up. And thereafter you find as X value increases, the Y value gets decreased. And in fact, at X equal to eight, you have a point. Which is a point where Y value is two. So as X increases, Y value decreases. Okay, so this, so orientation of the variables X and Y are in opposite you say directions. If X increases, Y decreases and other way around, if Y decreases, X increases. Okay, so this is what is called a negative correlational relationship. Now, as we discussed earlier, in the third one, there is no such correlation we find. No correlation here, they are not having any relationship at all. We have. Another example. Just see here, it is basically an example of what? Time spent studying for an examination and the marks score. Can be referred to as positive correlation, okay? It is the assumption that is being made, more the time you study, you will get better marks. Is it always true? Anyway, we are assuming that more time now you are in studying a particular subject, you will get now better marks. Okay, now what now is shown is that along the horizontal axis we have got time spent in hours. And marks are along the vertical axis. Oh, marks are up to one twenty, anyway, it's okay, hundred is the maximum, it can be one twenty hours depending on the type of scheme. The university or that board has, okay? You, you find here as the time now for a study increases. Even the marks are increased in one sample, okay, I don't say in all the samples. And you find it is in a positive relationship between time spent and marks, right? It's naturally positive. Now, if you consider other diagram. Where it is the production of wheat versus you know say price of wheat. If you know say along the horizontal axis we have got production of wheat and along the vertical axis it is the price. If the availability of you know say wheat, maybe for some you say reason. The production, the yield of wheat is much less. Naturally, it has, it become, it becomes a very scarce commodity and hence the price would be very high. Right, now as the wheat you know say, production goes high. You will find there is not so much of now scarce supply of wheat. And hence the cost will come down, that's what happens, right? Recently, because of heavy rains, you'll have seen how the, the you know prices of various vegetables were varying. It went to peak, then it started coming down. Because of heavy rains, naturally the production of vegetables was hit. That's why you know say it was available in a small quantity, so demand was not met. And if somebody wanted, they had to you know pay slight more, a higher you know say price. There's the logic that you have got here, more the production, naturally the cost comes down. Right, it is true of many other commodities, it is not you know say. Particular to wheat, it could be rice or jua or whichever. I think the idea is clear, right? Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, now we have. The. Negative, positive, negative correlation, now let us have one example for. Scatter plot for null correlation. I said already, if the points are not showing any pattern of increasing or decreasing. Where there is no clear increasing or decreasing trend or in the values of the variables, he is said to have no correlation. Here, the points are distributed randomly across the graph in the X Y plane, okay? One example that is shown here, of course, this may not be always true also, you should remember that. Number of birds in a tree at different times of the day. If you, somebody has plotted and the plot is this way and what you find is that. You can't draw any, slightly into, not possible at all. Even the curves you say here, parabola or whichever you know type of curve if you want to draw. It is very difficult to draw here because these are completely scattered. Here, what we see is that there is no relationship between the number of birds. You know say on the tree at a different you say times. Times could be problem, it may start at morning now. Yes, six AM and then eight AM or ten AM at which we have observed as to how many birds are there. The plot you will find is completely randomly scattered in the X Y plane. So there is no relationship at all between X and Y. Okay. In fact, here we have got one example. What do you do with the scatter diagram or plot? Can you do some analysis? There's the question to be answered. Can we do that? Yes, we can do to certain extent. It may not be exact, but it will always say whatever trend we have got between two variables X and Y. Okay, see, analysis of a scatter plot helps. Us understanding the following aspects of the data that you have got for X and Y. The different levels of correlation among the data points are useful to understand. The relationship within the data. Okay, that's one thing. And as you know, we have seen earlier, probably you can draw a straight line. Okay, or it could be a nice curve or second degree curve like in a parabola. Or it will be third degree in a curve or a curve can be drawn or a straight line can be fitted. Okay, the line of best fit can be drawn for the given data and used further. To predict new data values, meaning knowing the value of now X. It is this way, say for example, here now in the case of now time spent versus. No, mark, sorry, marks obtained versus time spent because time is on the horizontal axis. Can you predict as to what will be the possible mass students get? If they studied now say beyond five hours or say six hours or seven hours, can we get that from this now diagram? It is possible provided, we have got one such exercise as well. In case you draw a line which is very close to all these points, all these points. Then it could be a best line that is fitted. Okay, and that line has a formula, equation to satisfy. Say Y is equal to M into X plus C. Where M is the slope of the straight line, okay? C is the width intercept at which it cuts the Y axis. Okay, now once you have a formula Y is equal to MS plus C. Now how to fit that, that we will see soon in regression analysis, okay? Once you know Y is equal MS plus C straight line, where M and C are constants which are known to you. How to get that, that now we will see later, okay? Now, having such an equation, Y is equal MS plus C, given X. Given the time spent in studies in hours, you can always predict as to what would be the marks obtained by a student. Cannot do that, yeah, say at X equal to five hours, five hour study is being made. Over night you know say, study has been made by the student, it is true. And Y is equal to M, M is known, X is five, plus C, C is unknown. So you can get the value of Y, that's how we can predict the value of you know say Y given X. Okay, similarly, if I want to get now say hundred marks. How many hours of my study I should be putting in, I should be putting in, that also can be obtained. Can you use the same formula Y is equal MS plus C in this case? In fact, in the case of regression lines, if you want to compute Y value. For the given X value, you will have to use regression line of Y on X. On the other hand, given marks, given Y, if you want to compute the time spent in studies. That is the X value. There, you should use a regression line of X on Y. Okay, this is a thing that we will see anyway, I am saying now how it can be used to predict. The value of one variable given the value of the other variable, okay? Using this you know say, you know scattered diagrams. A line of best fit can be drawn for the given data and used to further you say predict new data values. The data on next point, data points lying outside the given set of data can be easily identified. To find the outliers, last time also we said about outliers and in fact one of the. The problems with arithmetic mean is that if one of the values is you know very high, then compared to the others. That will pull the arithmetic mean value. You know, to large extent, it is influenced by the large value, okay? And that is called outlier that we have seen, okay? Now, from observing the data plotted in the scatter diagram. You can find which are having nice pattern, which dots are having nice patterns if you consider them together. And which are the dots which are outside this nice now representation, for example now. I said in one of the years, cases here, days of a week and sales made. Yes, for example for day four, you have got dip which is not in line with either increasing or decreasing time. It is much less actually, you know, between day three and day five, okay? It's quite peculiar, don't know the reason, maybe that that is a holiday and people not, you know, have gone out. Maybe on the reasons, or maybe that there was a curfew for some reason, the sales has dipped. Okay, so because of this one point corresponding to days equal to four. You will not be able to fit any you know straight line or any other curve. We are discussing about data point which is on the outliers. Now grouping of, the last point that you should know in plot analysis or diagram analysis. Grouping of data points to points, sorry, in a scatter diagram can be identified as different clusters within data. This is another thing that now you should observe, for example. Here, days of the week and the sales made. You find that up to third day, there is increase, you can cluster them together. And fifth day and onwards in the week, you have got decreasing trend. So you have got two different clusters of now data points, one increasing trend, other ones are decreasing trend. And this is a small sample I tell you and maybe that now you take a larger sample in your research in a experiment. Okay, if you are going for, you know, market research or such thing. Then you find two to three sets of data. You find in one there is increasing trend, second decreasing trend as I said. And there is third one corresponding to days equal to four, it is low, okay? So we can always have such a clusters in the, in a case of scatter diagrams after observing that. This will also give you a lot of you know say input as to how you should plan. Your, you know, strategy for doing anything, marketing or others, okay? So, these are the scatter diagram analysis that you can do. Having drawn, having drawn the scatter diagram using X Y plane for two variables X and Y. Yeah, there is another question regarding this, we will see that later. Hope this is clear as to how to do the analysis of this scatter diagram. Now, there is one simple example that you know say is given here. Basically, the meteorological department has collected the following data. You are able to see this, right? Yeah? Able to can see, right? Narendra?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, alright, so. What is now say being done here is that the. Meteorological department has recorded data about temperature and humidity in a particular town. Okay, where the department is located. The table gives. Yeah, the humidity at temperatures. So in, of course, temperature is given in Fahrenheit, please observe that, okay, not enough, centigrade. When the temperature is forty five degree Fahrenheit, humidity is sixty percent. And as the temperature increases. You'll have to mute it, okay, I think somebody has unmuted, okay? As the temperature increases. Yeah, what you find is that humidity decreases. As the temperature increases, humidity decreases, that's quite but natural. And if you have a scatter diagram, it is now run over here. The collected data of the temperature and humidity can be represented or other presented in the form of a scatter plot or diagram. So it has been done over here, what we interestingly find is that these points are almost lying on a straight line. In fact now, we can fit a straight line to all these points, you find that. Two points lie exactly on the straight line that you have drawn and three are. Just touching you know say the line and the one at the top, you find slightly away, but it is very near. Okay, so this straight line can be used to represent these points almost exactly. Okay, small deviation of course you find in one point, others are perfectly alright, okay? Now, to calculate the humidity at the temperature sixty degree Fahrenheit. What do we do? In case you want to do that, what do we do? Use the straight line that is being drawn, how to draw this now straight line, that of course we'll have to discuss that. That the straight line should be drawn such that. The error in approximating the. Dots is minimum, okay? In this case, of course, it's almost minimum only if once you have drawn the diagram, but there are other things to it, we will see that later. A line of best fit is a straight line between, drawn to pass through most of the data points. I said most of the data points, some data points may be slightly. I said most of the data points, some, uh, data points may be slightly outside as we have seen here, okay? Uh, now draw your vertical line, uh, from the mark. Sixty degree Fahrenheit, so here on the, uh, along the horizontal axis, we have got, uh. The, uh, temperature, uh, what is now asked is that. The humidity at a temperature of sixty degree Fahrenheit is at what percentage? That's what is asked actually. And, uh, in the normal mathematics, it, uh, because sixty is in the range from, uh. Ten to. I think it is a hundred something, right? Yeah, in the range, it is basically interpolation problem. Okay, if you heard about interpolation, you'll have to find the value of now say, uh, humidity in percentage, given the temperature. Okay, so it can be easily be obtained, once you have got, once you have fitted a straight line to these, you know, say. Uh, scatter points, that can be done, of course, that's what is the study of now, uh, regression analysis and equation equations. Okay. Simple, right? So for the given problem, we can always do a sort of now diagram analysis. And using simple techniques, whatever are given over here, uh. Whatever given over here, these points, you can remember, analysis of, uh, scatter plots help. Uh, us now in understanding the following as well the data, I have given the red point, you can do. Uh, these four, uh, analysis, though these analysis are, uh, some are quite. Subjective, not objective as such, uh, we will make it objective after now fitting. Uh, the best must say curve, it could be straight line or parabola or any other curve. Uh, which, uh, will be very close to, to the data points that you have got in the scatter diagram. Okay, the best fit, that's what I was saying. Okay, this about, uh, this scatter diagram is very simple, how to use it for, uh, analysis as well we have seen. Considering the, uh, example of temperature versus humidity in a city. Now we will come to, uh, the correlation, what is correlation? How to measure? How to measure the amount of now say, uh, a relationship between the two variables? Okay, that's what now we are studying here, we are, uh, yeah. Quantifying, uh, the relationship, how do you do that? Uh, it is over here, of course, we are having correlation that is defined in terms of what is called, uh, covariance, that also we will see. And why not we use covariance which is shown over here, uh, why only correlation? These are all the point that now we have to discuss. The correlation coefficients are indicators of the strength of. Uh, linear relationship between two different variables X and Y. I said, if X increases, Y also increases. There is the, or if X decreases, Y also decreases. So in the orientation, the same for both the variables, in which we say, you have got positive correlation. Okay, if the orientations are in the different side. X increases but Y decreases, or yes, X decreases, Y increases. Next, uh, these opposite orientations, in that case, we have negative correlation. If they are scattered upon scattered, then of course you said, uh, we said that it is, uh, you know, zero correlation, no correlation at all. Can you quantify that? This what is the study over here, okay? A linear correlation coefficient that is greater than zero indicates positive relationship. We said that earlier, but here we are having now, uh, quantification of that, okay? And a value that is less than zero, uh, signifies a negative relationship. If the, when you using this formula, when you compute rho, it's called rho, okay? Rho, uh, which is, uh, the correlation coefficient. Between two variables X and Y, okay? Uh, if it is, uh, positive, we say positive correlation. If it is negative, it is, then we say, uh, there is negative correlation between X and Y. If it is zero, that says that there is no relation between the variables X and Y. Okay. Now, the formula if you see for correlation coefficient rho, uh, yeah, uh, that is equal to. Covariance of X and Y. Two variables as now we are given, okay, covariance of X and Y. Divided by sigma, sigma of X and sigma of Y. Basically, uh, the sigma for the data, uh, rather, the variable X. A sigma Y is the standard division for the variable Y. You know as to what standard division is, it is square root of a variance, uh, and variance, you know, how to compute. Okay, uh, here, we come to, uh, study little bit more about covariance. And then we will go to, uh, the correlation. Okay, and what is good about, uh, covariance, uh, what is so great about correlation, we will see that. Okay. Uh, positive covariance. A positive covariance between where two variables. Indicates, these two variables tend to be higher or lower at the same time. Both X and Y will be higher, meaning both are increasing, same orientation, that's what it means, or both will be decreasing. In other words, a positive covariance between variables X and Y indicates. X is higher than average at the same times, uh, as that of now Y. Basically, what you do here, X minus now mean X, mean of X, Y minus mean of Y, okay? If now say, uh, this now say, uh, factor in the first bracket. Uh, is now say positive, then Y minus now mean of Y is also a positive. In that we have, case we have got positive covariance. Similarly, if Xi minus mean of X is negative, in Xi is less than mean of X. In that case, if now Y minus mean of Y is also negative, negative into negative will become positive. Okay, so both now say difference should be, whatever you have got in the bracket should be either positive. Or both will be positive or both will be negative, in which case of course, uh, covariance will be positive only. Okay. In this case, we say, uh, there is, uh, positive covariance between the variables X and Y. Similarly, we have a negative covariance, that's quite simple, right? Uh, if now Xi minus the mean of X, if it is now positive, other one is negative. Or Xi minus the mean of X is now, uh, negative and Y minus the mean of Y is positive. Okay, in either case, you will find covariance of X Y is. Uh, you know, say, tell you that. Uh, there is now say, uh, negative covariance between, uh, the variables X and Y. Only problem that you find is that, what is the quantity by which this covariance exists? Uh, that is now defined here, though we can get the covariance value, but you don't have, uh, a. Yeah, uh, measure, uh, which will tell you. After normalizing. About a range within which. Correlation, uh, correlation coefficient, uh, lies, once you have that range. Things become very easy for us to analyze. Uh, covariance of X comma Y is, uh, very, you know, say arbitrary, now we can't say whether it lies. In some interval, in, if it is in some interval, it is much easier for us to analyze. We will see these things, okay. Now, correlation, uh, coefficient, what is it? That's what is given over here and what are the limits, these are the things that now we will see here. Correlation is a statistical, uh, term. Uh, describing the degree to which two variables move in coordination with another. If the two variables move in the same direction, then those variables are said to, uh, have positive correlation. If they move in opposite direction, then they have negative correlation. Now, if there is no correlation, correlation coefficient rho will be zero. Do you have such, you know, variables? Yes, we do have such variables, we will take one example at least now in our discussions. Now you are given, uh, one, uh, example. Where we have got now say, two data sets, one for X and one for Y. Here I am assuming, uh. There is no distinction between, uh, population and mean, if it is population, yeah, you have got now, uh, the. Parameters of the population, if now you have got now say sample, then of course you have what is called statistic. Okay, the corresponding now, uh, ones now for the, uh, you know, sample that I have said. But for our discussion to simplify, let us have, this is the population itself. Okay, and you know, uh, as to how to handle the, the, uh. Mean and variance of, uh, the sample that we have said in the beginning itself. Now, if you want to compute mean, because mean comes here, right? Mean is important in computing the covariance, okay, then you should also compute, uh, sigma X and sigma Y. Standard division of the variables X and Y respectively. Okay, how to do that? Very simple, of course, we can go by the straightforward formula or we can also go by simplified formula. Anyway, let me, uh, discuss this first, okay? In fact, now we will have to have one table, that's always better, okay? Xi values, then YI values, then we can have. Uh, deviation of Xi values from mean of X, so Xi minus now say mean of X. You just list down that, similarly, we can have BI, which is YA minus mean of Y, we can have all of them. Okay, then you can have AI square, then BI square. You also require, oh, you, yeah, AI into BI, because in, to compute, uh, the covariance of. Uh, S comma Y, you'll have to have AI into BI. Xi minus mean of X into YA minus mean of Y for the given now say I, you'll have to, uh, find their product. And finally, you sum all such products, that's what is being done, right? So you have A I B I. You have got the column, you'll have to write them, then the total is at the bottom. For example, total of X size is two, uh, sixty-eight, total of YA is five eighteen. Once you, uh, have this now, uh, size rather, not size, sum of X size and sum of YA's. We can divide them by, uh, seven to obtain the arithmetic mean of. Yeah, capital X and capital Y respectively, we can get them, once you have got them, you can compute Xi minus mean of X. Okay, I have written the values and please write for, uh, the other now say ones. First of all, you should know that these are the data sets that you are given, capital X and capital Y. Okay, and you should remember, covariance of X, of course, we have already, uh, given. Uh, the formula for computing covariance of now, I S comma Y. Now standard deviation is basically square root of variance. And variance is given by the formula, summation Xi minus mean of X whole square for every I of course. Okay, sum it divided by N, this is the formula for standard deviation. Here, okay, take its square root, you get sigma. Okay. And of course, I will tell you something now more about that, it's okay, we will see that, now fill this now, this table I have shown you, can you compute this? I am sure you have mobile, uh, to use as a calculator. The arithmetic mean of, uh, capital X is, uh. Thirty-eight point two nine, sorry, let me go back, thirty-eight point two nine, it is not two zero two nine. We can compute that. It comes to.
Sir, in the, in the previous slide, now calculating the sig, uh, the standard deviation.
Hmm.
The standard deviation of a sample, so the division should be with N minus one, not N.
Just a minute, I, I told you, let us not bother about, uh, population and sample, that's what I said. In the case of a population, we have got parameters such as, such as mu and sigma. Okay, in the case of now, uh, samples, we have got X bar and then, uh, S square. Okay, I said, for simplicity, we will not bother about that, we are given data set, we will consider. Uh, them as, you know, population themselves, that's the reason as to why I, I said you divide by seven.
Okay, sir.
Okay, it's one of the simplicity and you know, when it is in the population what to do and also you know as to how to handle the samples. Okay. Now, I think two sixty-eight the sum, you can compute the arithmetic mean easily. Uh, this table is not displayed, you please go through and compute and see as to, uh, what is that you get for covariance. And also sigma X, sigma Y, and if you divide covariance S comma Y by. Uh, sigma X, sigma Y, you get the, uh, stand, sorry, uh, correlation coefficient. Anybody got that?
Is this a formula for correlation of coefficients, sir?
Uh, okay, it is covariance of S comma Y. Divided by.
Sigma, sigma Y.
Yeah, sigma, sigma Y. And, uh, the table, uh, in the table I have got columns which will help you to compute them.
And, and how do you calculate, uh, covariance, it is, uh, summation, uh, uh, X minus X. X bar minus Xi into Y bar minus Y I divided by N.
Acha, see, what I have done, I could have written earlier only, say I have got A and BI, right? AI is Xi minus mean of X, BI is YA minus mean Y. So these are AI and BI, I have got the product A I B I in the last column. Okay.
Okay, so, so summation AI BI divided by N is the covariance.
Exactly, you are right, there you go.
Sir, we should remember this formulas for the examination, sir.
Okay, these now formulae of course are important.
Nowadays, you are, in the next, you just put the formula, you get the answers, so.
Uh, you are right, provide you have either now say, uh, R or.
No, Excel is good enough, sir.
Yeah.
Excel is good enough.
Yeah, even now say, yeah, scientific calculators do have. Uh, that's why now, in the exam hall, scientific calculus are, calculators are not allowed, you know, ignoring that. Anyway, in your analysis, you can, uh, use a scientific calculator or some package. Uh, SAS or R tool, uh, type of tools can be used. Okay, you have simply substitute the values of X, uh, X and Y, you get the, the, you know, correlation coefficient. And also if you wanted in specific, uh, this covariance, that also you can get. Sigma x and sigma y, so you get. But you should know as to how they work, that's the reason as to why I thought this one problem you can work out. Some of you have got bi. The arithmetic mean of now y is seventy four, am I right?
Yes, sir. So what is sigma x?
Sigma, x is two sixty eight, right? Verify.
Two sixty eight?
Yeah, you add them up, no, I think.
No, no, I am talking about standard deviation.
For standard, you have to calculate that.
No, do you have the value I have already calculated?
No, I have got the final value of r.
Okay, one minutes.
And Professor Ramesh Moti had one relevant question, how to remember the formula? And that too, there are equal and formulae as well for both covariance and variance. Okay, standard deviation is basically square root of variance. And I will let you know, you compute the correlation coefficient. You will not get negative here, take it from me. Here in this case, we have got positive correlation coefficient. Anybody got sigma x and sigma y? What is sum of ai squares? Some of you must have got, right? Sum of ai squares. Nobody got?
Thousand two seventy three point four three.
Thousand two seventy three point four three, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, what about bi square?
Eight forty two, sir.
Eight forty two. What is ai minus bi, ai into bi, sorry, ai into bi, which will help us to calculate the covariance of x and y. Corresponding differences from arithmetic, respective arithmetic means are multiplied.
Five five nine, sir, I got.
Itna, how much?
Five five nine.
Oh, five five nine, okay. Five five nine, it is positive, right? Not negative.
It is positive, sir.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good. Now, once we have these values, you can substitute here. Sigma in general formula is known, that square root of summation xi minus mean of x whole square divided by n. Now, for sigma x, the same formula works good. Sigma y, you have got summation ya minus mean of y whole square divided by n, where n is seven, okay? And we can substitute here and get sigma x and sigma y. And then you are given as a covariance now say ai bi, summation is five fifty nine. And you'll have to divide that by, you have the formula over here for covariance of s comma y. You'll have to divide that summation that you have got on the numerator, that is five five, as I said, five five nine divided by seven, that will give you the covariance of s comma y. Once you got covariance of now say s comma y, divide that by sigma x and sigma y, you should be able to get the value of rho, the correlation coefficient. In some test books, correlation coefficient is also divided by r, okay? R is also being used. So ai into bi summation is positive. A increase with the bi or a decrease with the bi, okay? Positive and if you compute the r value, how much is coming? Five five nine divided by seven, what is divided by sigma x and sigma y. You got the values?
Sir, can you move the slide to the previous one?
So what is the rho value, the total answer?
Okay, got the value?
Sir, can you move the slide once, just previous ones or where that formula I have given? Sir?
If you have got the value, please tell me, I can verify that. You get the value? Is it tough to calculate the mean and, sorry, standard deviation and covariance? Simple, right?
Sir, sigma x one eighty one point nine two.
Sukesh or somebody can give me the value, Kavita? Still calculating? Amit, you could get that? Oh, somebody got, I got a square root of now sigma, keep it there, let me read that. Oh, anyway, I can go to the. Yeah, Amit got square root of sigma of x is one eighty one point, sigma x whole square, right? It is or under square root? Amit? I think it is the square variance, right? You'll obtain the square root of that. Okay. Yeah, it is a squared one, yeah.
Sir, are you able to hear us, sir?
Okay. Oh, I am not heard, very strange. Am I heard now? You are able to hear me?
Sir, we can hear you, can you hear us, sir?
Yasin Tower, Desri can say, but then now you have got the.
Sir, can you hear us?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you. Oh, Anitha says it is zero point five four nine, that is the correlation coefficient value.
Sir, sir, can you put that formula slide, sir? Just the slide, yeah, not the table, just the slide before that we had those formulae.
Yeah, table is not shown. Now you can see the slide, right, Amit?
Previous.
Oh, previous slide you wanted, okay. I think where you have the formula, right? For the covariance. Here is the formula for rho, the correlation coefficient. I think it is Anitha who got the answer, zero point five four nine, right, Anitha?
Yes, sir. Is it correction? Sigma x is thirteen point four nine, sigma y is ten point nine seven and the covariance is eighty one point two nine. So finally coefficient, that.
Anybody else got the value of rho, the correlation coefficient?
Um, I took at the same value, sir.
What is the value?
Four zero nine. The last value, rho.
Again have gone.
I think sir is not able to hear us. Now can you hear us, sir? Sir?
Oh, yeah, I am about here, it was in the mute mode. You got zero point five something, right?
Sir?
You got zero point.
Five four nine.
Five, five something, right, five four.
Five four nine, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's the correct answer. I think all of you have got this.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, good. Now you know as to how to compute the correlation coefficient between two variables x and y. You find the correlation coefficient is positive in this case, okay? As x increases, even y also increases. If x decreases, y also decreases. As X increases, even Y also increases, if X decreases, Y also decreases. Positive correlation coefficient, and furthermore, it is less than one. If correlation coefficient is one, then it is a perfect, now say, relationship between X and Y. Okay, if no correlation coefficient, now say, row is zero, then there is no relationship between the variables X and Y. It could be negative as well. Negative values can range from zero to minus one. Minus one is the complete opposite side, they are increasing or decreasing, okay? That's how you get now minus one. And row is between minus one and plus one, there is a range within which row lies. Whereas for covariance, there is no guarantee that it lies in an interval. Okay, that's the reason as to why, to study the relationship between two variables X and Y. Always, always, the correlation coefficient is being used rather than, rather than the covariance of between X and Y. Okay? So.
Officer.
Yeah. Once you know that now say R lies between zero, minus one and plus one, then you can go for further, now say, analysis. And also use row value to predict the value of one variable given the other variable. In fact, what is normally done is to, is to compute regression line of Y on X, if you want to predict the value of Y given X. And similarly, we have the regression line of X on Y, if you want to predict, yes, given. Given Y value. This are the two, like I will say, predictions that is possible if you want to use the equation. Uh, being say, equations for predictive analytics, okay? Now, question comes as to how do you study the relationship between more than two variables? Okay, two variables fine, the two or the relationship that you have got is linear, that is what is assumed to be the case in, you know, regression, not regression, sorry, the correlation coefficient computation. They are assuming either it is linear increasing or linear decreasing or it is zero, that's what we say, we have been saying. Okay? But if it is not linear, then what do we do? That's point number one. Point number two is that if you have got XYZ, say three variables or four variables, how do you handle situation? These are few of the, you know, important points that we should know, okay? Normally for all our predictions, we use straight line to fit. Okay, yeah, Narasima got zero point five four zero or something, okay, it is point, zero point five four, okay? And other things anyway, I will conserve only two digits after decimal point, okay? All right, the more point is that what if the relationship between X and Y is not linear? Okay, it is nonlinear, that is one question that we were discussing. Second one is, uh, we have not just two, we have got multiple variables. Say we have got variable, variables X one, X two, X three. For example, yield of a crop, no, it will depend on not just two variables, multiple variables. Okay, in some cases, how do you go over studying the regression equation? So that we can do the prediction, that is the question. And there do we have the correlation coefficient to be discussed? Yeah, we'll have to see that, okay? And secondly, if the relationship between X and Y is other than linear, how do you handle that? There is the other question that now say we have. These are the two scenarios, which of course we'll have to take up and study the regression, now say, and do the prediction. Okay? Now, apart from this, I will go back to whatever Professor Ram, Ramesh Muth has said. How do we, which formula do you use and in what form? For example, when we studied random variables and their standard deviation, either variance or standard deviation, we had also used the formula. Variance or standard deviation square is equal to E of X square. That is expected value of X square minus E of X, that is arithmetic mean whole square. That formula is also used. Similarly for the covariance of sigma Y, we have got one formula which I have given, that's the original formula. Summation XY minus mean of X whole square, no, XY minus mean of X into uh YI minus mean of X, okay? The product of the differences and you'll have to submit divided by N, okay? That is the covariance of now say X comma Y. Even then, we have got a simplified formula. We can use the original formula for both standard deviation and square as well as for covariance of sigma Y. Or we can use the simplified formula for standard deviation, which is, as I said, EF X square. Expected value of X square minus mean square, okay? We can use these two, one of the formulas to compute sigma square and take square root, we get the sigma. Similarly, covariance of X, whatever you have now, can also be simplified, okay? And if you simplify covariance of X, you get a simpler formula in the form summation XY minus uh mean of X into mean of Y, okay? I can, it's okay. How to simplify that, it is very simple mathematical addition that we have. After now multiplying both the deviations XY minus mean of X and YI minus mean of now say Y. It is quite simple and we can do that on your own, I don't want to do that. But for standard deviation square, you have got two formulae. Is it okay? You are able to hear me?
Yes, sir, sir, we can hear you.
All right. I think today it is sufficient because actually evening as I had taken class. Let us continue in the next week, I will have one and a half hours on either Thursday or Friday, which will be communicated by Dr. Nupama and.
First check is given.
We will have exactly two hours, today of course I am concluding a bit early. Probably leaving now say fifteen minutes now say for you to just now say, you know, move out, okay? Let us continue next class. Open the idea about the scatter diagrams and R plots and the correlation coefficients are clear. And we will move into regression and then post the modeling whatever now we have using regression. Different types of regression modeling and also we will have nonlinear regression being converted into linear regression using a simple mathematical transformations, okay? That we will take up in the next class, today with this, let us close, okay? I'll be sending the PPT soon.
Sir, can you share the previous PPT, sir, that you use?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks and bye.
Bye, sir, thank you, sir.